Let's get the microphone. Thank you. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting on Monday, September 28th. Would you please join Councilman Osborne in the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come today to pray for others and ask for your wisdom. How can we serve the people of our city? How can we serve our neighbors? How can we serve you, God? We pray for our citizens, their health, their success, and their happiness. We lift up our neighbors, the cities of Avondale, Litchfield Park, and Buckeye. For we know if we become a people of mediocrity, it's because we have stopped troubling ourselves in your name, and that would be a shameful thing. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Osborne. All right. Councilman Stipp will not be attending this evening, so I need a motion and a second to excuse him. Do I hear it?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Lortano and a second from Councilman Pizzillo. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. We have one communication item tonight. It's always a fun one and a pleasant one. David Seider, Parks and Recreation Manager, will introduce and present, and I guess you're going to introduce Tim Downs, is that correct?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, just so they know, that Tim Downs is the Goodyear Little League president, so go ahead with it.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I know this program is near and dear to your heart, and we're very excited and proud to recognize them on their independent transition. So, we have a few individuals from the program today, ranging from board members to participants, as well as spouses and team moms, so we're very excited to share that story with you tonight, so.
Well, you are going to introduce them all, or they... Okay.
As we go forward.
All right, thank you.
A little over a year ago, Goodyear Little League announced their intention to operate as a fully independent Little League charter. From that moment on, the Parks and Recreation Department has worked closely with Goodyear Little League to assist in a seamless transition and a continued program success. The city of Goodyear has been a proud sponsor of Goodyear Little League since its inception a little over 10 years ago, and today we congratulate them on their successful independent transition, which officially took place this past season. To share more on this significant milestone, I'd like to introduce Goodyear Little League Board President, Tim Downs, and invite him to the podium to share a little bit on his program.
Welcome.
Evening.
Good evening.
As you said, I'm Tim Downs. This is Jim Beaumont. He was our previous president from the year prior. We have his sons here who are our participants, Ryan and Reese. And we have a couple team moms sitting back here, my wife Stephanie and Jim's wife Heather. First and foremost, I want to just extend our heartfelt gratitude, thanks, to the Parks and Rec program. They, when we went independent, it was a great deal of work, to say the least. It was, you know, we had to design quite a bit to get it where we were managing registrations and everything involved with putting the league together that you, the city, had shouldered the effort on for so many years. Parks and Rec guys were with us the entire time. They didn't hesitate every time we needed help. They didn't hesitate every time we needed some sort of hand when it came to the fields, whether there was problems, what have you. Outstanding Parks and Recs program, so I wanted to make sure and publicly thank them for that and excellent work. Our program is quite extensive. We have 600 players. We had in the order of, I think it was 49 teams.
Awesome.
Seven divisions, including a challenger division, which is a special needs division, which was really exciting and neat to see. I think we had a little over 300 games played in Goodyear fields.
Wow.
So we were, we were pretty much dominated the place for some time now. So it's a big program. Baseball across the country, they say, is reducing its participation a little, but here in Goodyear, we've stayed pretty steady. So I think we have a good program, and of course, the city had a big play in making that successful, so thank you very much again.
You're quite welcome. Because I know council wants to talk, so David, you have to tell me what's next.
Absolutely. With that, if you would like to make any comments to the board or staff as well.
Okay, so I know who would like to talk first. Councilman Pizzillo.
Again, I remember I used to do that long, long time ago, and it's, I appreciate all your efforts you do to get them out there active and playing sports, so again, appreciate all your efforts. Thank you.
Sherry. Councilman Lortano, excuse me.
I'd like to thank you both, and you guys having fun? Yeah? That's what it's all about. So I do appreciate, as a mom of a 12-year-old boy who's played on and off for several years, it's a great league, and thank you guys for all your hard work.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Osborne.
Thank you. Thank you to the wives and all the coaches. I know that it takes a great deal of people to take off 300 games. I mean, that's quite a feat, and so we know that it's a lot of volunteer time from parents and from coaches and from refs and just, you know, everybody that comes together. But you know what? It is the American sport that we all love, and I'm glad that it's thriving and strong here in Goodyear. We really appreciate you guys stepping up and doing the work. Thanks.
Councilman Campbell.
I just want to thank all of you and the team moms, having been a team mom before. I know the work and working in the snack bar and doing all the other stuff, so thank you moms so much. And for the adults that give your time to make sure that these youngsters have this opportunity, how can we ever thank you for what you're giving to our children and our grandchildren? We just thank you so much, and we're so thrilled that it's so alive, and we look forward to being invited to your opening day ceremony. That's something I look forward every year because it is so much fun. I don't have any children playing, but I love to watch the kids play, and we appreciate you coming tonight and being with us.
Councilman Holman.
Well, I was not familiar with the program, but I am so happy to hear in the program. How impressive is that? 600 children, 49 teams, including special needs. I commend you and appreciate you, and I wish our young people many hours of great fun, thanks to the efforts of these adults. And the partnership is indeed impressive, too. So, thank you.
Mayor, can I just...
Yes, of course.
To our park staff, thank you, David. Thank you, Nathan. Thank you, all of you who have helped them transition to be so successful, because we loved having you as part of our Park and Rec Department, but we want you to flourish on your own, and I do appreciate the wonderful cooperation and that y'all realized how important it was. Thank you very much.
Well, I just want to say the progress has been speedy. When you think about just a number of years ago, when decided to have Little League in Goodyear, wasn't here, and the process started, and I think the city was very supportive, but the community was very supportive. There's been a long line of parents who have taken positions in Little League and spent many, many hours, so we really appreciate it because that does help the makeup of our city. I don't know, a city without Little League is a city that's not a city. It just takes that family activity. And of course, young men, what we look at, see, we watch your names, and then in the future, we hope you see, right, are the universities playing, you know? Maybe a pro player will come out of this, you just never know. So we're really excited to be able to watch you year after year as you make great inroads in baseball. And parents, what can I say? I know, four children, they were all in athletics, so I've been in the car. I know you spend all your time in the car, and helping also, like Wally said, so. And to the coaches, thank you, thank you, thank you, and the administrative taking the presidency on, it's a big responsibility. And then I agree. David, listen, you've done a great job. I've seen you out there on the field. I've seen you active. Nathan, we've seen how the Recreation Department has come alive. When we started, there wasn't a Park and Rec, and I remember Wally saying, "You've got to have a Park and Rec." So it's really developed, and thank you, thank you very much, because you're making a change, you're improving young people's lives, and that's important. So can we give a round of applause?
Thank you, guys. We appreciate the welcome.
You're quite welcome.
Bye.
We'll see you at the ballgame.
I'm going to drink some now.
All right, now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? All right, well then, let's just go on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda, item 6.1, by title only, please?
Authorize the city manager designate to execute an intergovernmental agreement and any other necessary documentation to carry out the intent of the IGA with the cities of Avondale, Litchfield Park, and Tolleson to hold a semi-annual household hazardous waste collection day event.
Thank you very much. Does anyone from the public wish to remove the item 6.1 from the consent agenda? Does anyone in the council wish to remove this item? All right, could I please have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Campbell and a second by Councilman Holman. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 6-0.
Great, it passes. Any comments before we go on to the business? Just want to say to Litchfield Park, we're certainly happy to be a partner, and so I presented myself to them and said, "What are you doing here? Did you get confused?" This is...
I asked you, too.
Yeah, I thought that would be... So we're really pleased to continue our partnership. All right, so let's go on to the business, 7.1. The first item is to consider the intergovernmental agreement with Litchfield Park for fire protection and emergency medical services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Louise, excuse me, Fire Chief to present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are you tonight? I just wanted, before I start, to introduce city manager from Litchfield Park, Darrell Crossman's here, and also Chuck Ransom from the Building Department in Public Works in Litchfield Park. Tonight, very simple, they want to make a change to their IGA that they have with the city of Goodyear for fire and emergency services, which also includes plan review and fire inspection. And when we adopted our 2012 fire and building codes, we also had amendments that we adopted as well. And within the agreement previously that was adopted in 2010, it said that Litchfield Park shall adopt all amendments that the city of Goodyear does as well. They would like to make a simple change from the word "shall" to "may," because they certainly have some different variances within their city that they would like to maintain themselves. I'll stand for any questions at this time.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then, would the city clerk please read Resolution 15-1720 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 15-1720 approving and authorizing the city manager to execute amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Goodyear and the city of Litchfield Park for fire protection and emergency medical services and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Lortano and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. Yes, Councilman Pizzillo.
Just a general question, Chief. If their reviews or requirements are different, is that going to affect the workload, I guess, for the Inspection Department for the city of Goodyear?
We don't anticipate it will affect the workload. What we do anticipate is that they'd have to have a, you know, maybe a check sheet just to make sure that the amendments that Litchfield Park does adopt, if they're slightly different, that they would just be knowledgeable of those. I've been working and talking with Christopher Baker, the Development Services Director, about that possibility, that, you know, we would make sure that we stay in communication with the city of Litchfield Park and those amendment changes and how they affect any plan review.
Do we do the plan review, or do they do the plan review?
We do it.
Okay, so we would have to stay abreast of any difference in changes on what we do?
Correct.
So you'll have the city standards, and then you have their standards?
Yeah, and their amendments. And honestly, after talking with Litchfield Park, they're going to adopt probably about 90% of those, so there'll be just very slight variances.
So they'll bring it to your attention, I would assume, on those variances, and it should be, but small, minor?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we anticipate.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you. Well, we'll continue a great partnership, and we all share many things in each other's cities, so thank you very much. All right, let's go on to the next one. To consider preliminary plat for the enclave at Palm Valley North, Chris Foden, Architectural Planner, to present.
This is a request for the approval of the preliminary plat for the enclave at Palm Valley North for the site located at the northeast corner of 146th Avenue and Camelback Road. The site consists of approximately eight and a half acres and is subject to be subdivided into 48 lots and four open space tracks. On July 13th, 2015, City Council approved the Enclave at Palm Valley North PAD amendment. The proposed enclave at Palm Valley North preliminary plat is consistent with the requirements for the city's subdivision guidelines and design guidelines. The proposed density is consistent with the city's general plan and the proposed development. The general land use plan designates the subject property as neighborhood. The development standards for neighborhoods allow for the minimum, for medium-density neighborhoods, allow for the, sorry, allow for the, allow for densities greater than five dwelling units per acre and up to 12 dwelling units per acre on arterial streets. The 2025 general plan encourages neighborhoods that, with development that supports the city's desired community character and vision by providing trails, open space tracks, and connectivity. On May 8th, 2006, the City Council adopted ordinance 061002 rezoning approximately 209 acres of property generally located at the north of Camelback Road, west of the Sun Valley property in Litchfield Park, and east of the Falcon Dunes Golf Course. This rezone is known as the Palm Valley Phase 9. On July 13th, 2015, the City Council adopted ordinance 15-1325 rezoning the vacant 8.61 acres. This rezone is known as the Enclave of Palm Valley North. The rezone amended the Palm Valley Phase 9 PAD to allow 48 attached dwelling units and modify the development standards. Directly adjacent to the north of the Palm Valley Phase 9 is Luke Air Force Base. To the east is Litchfield Park and the Sun Health property. To the south is single-family residential in Litchfield Park. To the west is existing single-family residential in Palm Valley Phase 9, and to the north is existing single-family residential development within Palm Valley Phase 9. Access to the proposed enclave at Palm Valley North development will be from two vehicular entrances off 146th Avenue. It's shown here and here. And the typical lot sizes proposed within the development are 45 feet by 100 feet. However, there are a number of lots that will be 110 feet deep. Track C, located at the middle of the development here, will be the main retention basin and will be designed and constructed in accordance with the city of Goodyear's engineering standards. Also located in Track C is a community pool specific to the enclave. The proposed enclave at Palm Valley North development contains 48 attached residential dwellings at a density of 5.58 units per acre. The development of the site will not increase the allowable maximum density for Palm Valley The required open space for this parcel is 14%. Within the proposed enclave development, there are four open space tracks and creating approximately 14.3% open space, or 1.23 acres. The developer does have in place a school district contribution agreement with both Aguafria Union High School District 216 and Litchfield Elementary School District 79. I do have a copy of the agreement with me this evening if you have any additional questions. We did notify Phoenix Goodyear Airport, and given the location and the nature of the proposed development, the airport would not be adversely affected. The subject property is located approximately one-half mile outside the high noise and accident potential zone of Luke Air Force Base and is subject to periodic overflights from the base. As discussed during the enclave PAD amendment, we did receive in writing a response from Mr. James Mitchell, Director of Community Initiatives, Team 56 Fighter Wing, and a copy of that letter and a previous letter was included in your packets. Luke's concerns remain the same, as the inherent dangers have not changed. The property is located adjacent to the base's high explosive munitions storage area and less than a mile from the jet engine maintenance test pad. Should be noted that the density for the subject parcel has been reduced with the approval of the PAD amendment. It was recommended by Luke that if the city chooses to approve the enclave, the enclave preplat, special circumstances must be made to mitigate the safety and noise issues. Stipulations have been added to the approval of this. Also a standard stipulation requiring the developer to display in the sales office the Luke Air Force Base notification map and shall include and clearly depict the location of the development, which is right here. It's tough to see on there. A copy of the map was distributed to you earlier this evening. This map clearly shows the accident potential zones, the noise contours, jet engine test pads, and the munitions blast radius.
Can you point to the property on that map?
Yeah.
I'm sure we've got the right one. Thank you.
So it's that right there.
Thank you.
It should also... It should also be noted that this map shows the location of the Arizona Motorsports Park, which is located directly south of the jet engine test pad, which is right there.
Wow.
A citizen review is not required for a preliminary plat, and closing staff recommends the request for the approval of the enclave at Palm Valley preliminary plat. The development of the parcel should be in conformance with the preliminary plat dated July 27th, 2015, and stipulations distributed at this evening's presentation. That concludes my presentation for this evening. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is also available.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then, could I please have a motion and a second to approve the request for the preliminary plat from Matney Homes to subdivide approximately 8.61 acres into 48 single-family residential and four open space tracks for development known as the Enclave at Palm Valley North, generally located at the northeast corner of 146th Avenue and Camelback Road, Zone PAD subject to stipulations. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Lortano and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Open for discussion. Councilman Pizzillo.
Can you put the map back up again?
The aerial or the...
Yeah, the big one here. Now that circles the blast zone?
Correct.
And right below that's the housing? Is that correct?
Yes, so right below that is existing Palm Valley North, or Palm Valley Phase 9. You can see the roads there, and then right along Camelback Road is the enclave, and this...
Which is...
You see the...
Okay. Let me ask you this, the stipulations, you say the engines, you're going to have engine noise over there just to the, what is it, west of the site, right?
Yes.
And you have home, where are currently homes located? Point to me where the currently homes.
All within this area right here. You can see the roads.
Are we getting any complaints from noise or anything else from the engines from any of those individuals that live there?
Not that I'm aware of.
None? Yeah, the only thing that kind of concerns me is I see that, yeah, that circle where that blast zone is, and if you're not getting any complaints from homes that are already existing there from that look that are even closer to that engine test facility than the new ones that you're proposing there. What are the stipulations that are in there as far as the new homeowners? Are they going to be mentioning these parameters when these homes are sold?
Well, the stipulation that we have on the project is the owner, developer of the property shall meet or exceed the sound attenuation requirements found in ARS 28-8482, so Arizona State statute. Consideration shall be given to potential blast effects in the layout and development and the design of the structures.
Let me ask you this, will they be notified as part of the process when the homes are built of what's to the west of them and the zone itself?
As far as we require them to sign a waiver, that they're aware of that Luke Air Force Base is in the vicinity.
I just want to make sure whoever's buying in here, that they're aware of what's to the, what, west of it and in the zone, that's all.
Mm-hmm.
How about telling the signs that are going to be put up in the stipulation?
Yeah, so the signs are posted and are required to be posted in the sales office.
Okay. I think also, was there somewhere on the land right now, somewhere on the land they're going to be posting it? Am I, do I have an incorrect...
Not the one I'm reading, so...
Can anybody answer that?
Where's the developer?
Yeah, well, no, it's...
Does he move?
I thought that was, I was told today that, that there actually will be signs out on the land...
I just want...
Where the houses are built, that's all I'm asking.
Mayor Lord, not that I'm aware of. I haven't heard of us doing that previously.
Interesting.
Yeah, I just, personally, I just want to make sure that when the homes are being built, that the potential buyers are just aware of what's to the west there as far as the testing and then also the blast zone, that they're aware that it's there.
So we do require them to sign a waiver. The developer has, shall provide a waiver agreement, which shall run with the land for each initial home buyer to sign. That clearly states that the enclave at Palm Valley North is subject to attendant noise, vibrations, dust, and all other effects that may be caused by overflights and by the operation of aircraft landing at Luke Air Force Base and the Phoenix Goodyear Airport.
How about in addition, the, what is that, Engine Test Center? I didn't hear that in there.
Mayor, Councilman Pizzillo, as Mr. Foden is alluding to, there is a document that the owner has to, the potential owner signs as a waiver, saying that they know they're buying within these zones. The map, this map, this colored map that is shown right here on Elmo, which I learned something new tonight, by the way, this is called Elmo, is, these contour lines are sound, obviously, and this is the content of the map that is to be posted in the sales office. The individual developer takes the content of this map, which the city developed, and then gives notice to the prospective buyers and owners that, and it has to clearly show where the potential, where the homes they are looking at acquiring are located in reference to these contour lines. So this map would be posted with more detail showing the layout of the enclave here where the X is, where my pen is, so that the potential owners know that they're located outside of this explosion area. This is the Arizona Motorsports Park right there, and these are the noise contours. So we are giving public notice in accordance with state law and city requirements.
Okay, and it will also be marked, I assume, that they'll know what that circle is, and they'll also know that little engine, where those engine test sites are. It'll be identified.
Yes, sir. We'll ensure that the...
Please do.
That the applicant does that. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Cheryl, Councilman Holman, excuse me.
I was kind of concerned because it's my understanding that these waivers are signed at closing.
That is correct.
That seems real late in the process to... That seems real late in the process to, for someone to not buy a house. I don't know if there's any way you can do it earlier than that, but at closing seems a bit late for that kind of revelation.
Let the developer address that of Matney Homes. Just announce where you are, where you live.
Jose Castillo, Matney Homes, 826 West Avondrieve, Gilbert. Madam Mayor and council members, the public report is given to all purchasers, and it contains all of the disclosures, the blast, motor park, all of the information that affects the subdivision.
When?
At the time that they are interested in buying the home or at the time they actually put a deposit down or sign a contract.
Councilman Loret, Vice Mayor Loretano.
I just had a question with the not noise contour lines, are those going to be, I want to say, redone with the F-35, or do those include the F-35 sound, or how does that work? And if they do change, then will we make sure the map changes with the homeowner?
As far as I know, the map is current and up to date with all of the F-35 information. If the map does change, we will update it. The only thing we would need to do is coordinate with the city to make sure that we get the information.
And you're going to have this colored map, it's going to be posted?
There's already a map posted in the sales center, actually, currently.
And I think that's our concern, is we do have people often who come back and say they didn't see it, and we just want to make, cover it all, make sure they get as much opportunity.
There's several waivers on this particular project that buyers have to sign. I want to say there's probably four or five in relation to noise and the sports complex and the blast zone.
And I have one more question, how many houses are currently built in the other sections of this?
I believe we have about 20-ish that are actually closed and living there.
And have you had any problems of anyone coming and complaining?
We don't have any complaints that I know of.
Councilman Campbell?
I've just got a couple of real quick questions. I appreciate you identifying the motorsports area because that was a real hot topic for this city several years ago with that noise. And I do know that the county is monitoring them, and I'm assuming we won't have any complaints against them because of the sound monitoring that goes on all the time there. As the builder, do you plan on building a fence in the backyard of those homes that back up to that, to Luke? Is that going to be part of the home when they buy it?
This particular development, actually, Councilmember Campbell, this particular development actually doesn't back directly to Luke.
Oh.
Palm Valley, the rest of Palm Valley that we currently are building does.
Yes, and I've seen those, I've seen those fences, and I've seen that area, I just didn't, I'm sorry, well, then they don't really need a back fence because that's going towards La Loma.
Correct.
Right? Okay. I think it's going to be nice when it's done.
Me too.
Councilman Osborne?
I just have one question regarding the open space. I know you stated that it was 14 acres. Within this area, how much of that was high and dry? Did it satisfy what the city?
The requirement is 14%, and it's actually at 14.3%, which equals 1.23 acres of the site.
One, I'm sorry?
1.23 acres.
Is, is out of retention?
Is open space.
No, I know, but, but I thought we also had within the open space requirement of what was allowed to be retention and what was never to have water. You know, we've had in the past where you would have open space, but when it rained or something, even the parks for the kids were flooded, and so it was a bad way of using the open space formula. So that's, do you know what I'm speaking of?
The retention is all in through here, and then this would all, this is all, this is at grade here, and then there's some retainers drainage through here.
Okay.
They do not have an actual percentage.
Okay, and is there going to be a tot lot in this area? I see you have a pool.
Councilmember Osborne, no, there's no tot lot plan currently. Our amenity feature for this particular project of Palm Valley is the pool amenity. They will have access to the other tot lots within Palm Valley. It will be annexed in as part of Palm Valley.
I see, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so if we're ready to, could, let me see, where am I? Could I have a second? I've already done that, haven't I?
Yeah.
So let's go for the, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Sorry, we're all, just do it again, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Let's go on to 7.3 to approve a CAP water order for 2016. Gretchen Irwin, Water Resources Planning Advisor, to present. Welcome, Gretchen.
Thank you very much. I believe I have a slideshow. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lord and members of the council. I'm here to present to you the recommendation for the Central Arizona Project Water Order for calendar year 2016. Our recommendation is to purchase 9,000 acre feet to fulfill our replenishment obligation for 2016. The cost of the water is $171 an acre foot, and that covers operation, maintenance, recharge, and energy. The total cost will be $1,539,000. It's funded out of the operating budget, which you approved already for fiscal year 16. Just as a little refresher and a perspective on what we're ordering this year, you can see that in the past, we haven't ordered very much water, and we've been steadily increasing our order. You can also see that the prices are steadily increasing also. The past three years, we haven't ordered enough water to cover our replenishment obligation, so we make up that difference by taking the water out of our long-term storage account. This graph illustrates the relationship between our long-term storage account, both historical and future projections, and that's the dark blue area with the volume axis on the left side of the graph. And the red line represents our replenishment obligation, both historical and projected. It's interesting to note that as we chipped away at our long-term storage credit account, we were on a, the trend was such that if we had continued in that manner, we would have exhausted our account completely by 2020. So the recommendation to order the volume of water that we need to replenish our, completely replenish our obligation this year and in the future, will allow us to grow that bank account back. And we'll do that by recharging our reclaimed water, which we are doing now at the SAT site and in the future at the Vados Injection Well Project sites. So the benefits to the city, CAP water is the least expensive renewable supply to use for our replenishment. Our other option after exhausting our long-term storage account would be to pay the Central Arizona Groundwater Replenishment District, CAGRID, to replenish the water for us, and that's at least three times more expensive than the CAP water is. It also allows us to meet our groundwater replenishment obligation. And last week at the Water Leader Summit, we heard Jeff Taylor from the Arizona Department of Water Resources talk about our goal of safe yield. So this allows us to put back in the aqua for what we're taking out, so we are in balance for safe yield. And it will allow us to grow our long-term storage credit account again, and I guess I should be half, careful, if there are shortages on the Colorado River, it will put the city in a stronger position water-wise, so. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Irwin. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then, could I please have a motion and a second to approve an order of 9,000 acres feet of water from the Central Arizona Project for the calendar year 2016? Do I hear a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
All right, I'm going to give the motion to Councilman Osborne, a second by Councilman Campbell, open for council discussion. Was it Councilman Holman?
No.
I thought, I'm sorry, all right. Councilman Campbell.
My question is, 9,000 is the max that we need to do this year, and then that will bring us up where we have put back what we've taken out?
Yes, we anticipate that that will cover our obligation for 2016.
Okay. The price is extremely reasonable after reading about some of our neighboring states that are paying $4,000, $5,000, $6,000 an acre foot for their water. So I'm very happy that we are being so proactive because it is absolutely critical that we store and get all the water we possibly can so that we can continue to grow in Goodyear.
Any other, Councilman Pizzillo?
Just a gentle question, you kind of struck my attention when you said the groundwater replenishment district was three times the cost. Why is it so expensive?
You know, I don't know the answer to that, and I don't know the exact price this year or 2016. The past, it's been approximately $600 an acre foot to have them replenish for us, so this is a much better...
If you have a chance, I'm just curious why it's that much more expensive than the cap. I'm just, just curious, because we're in the general, we're in that district, right?
We are a member service provider, we are not member service lands.
Okay.
So there's a difference. We don't have to use CAGRID to replenish.
Okay.
We can if we need to, but we don't have to.
So by going with the CAP water, we save ourselves a lot of money, okay, as long as that money, that water's available to us.
Yes.
Yeah, but when you said three times, it's like, whoa, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Councilman Osborne?
Thank you for getting us back on the right track. This is a good investment, appreciate it.
Great. Any other comments? Makes you think twice about a glass of water once you drink it, doesn't it?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Last item on business to consider the Fourth Amendment to the Northern Solutions Water Facility Agreement. Rebecca Zook, Engineering Director, to present.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm here this evening to seek approval for the Fourth Amendment of the Northern Solutions Water Facilities Agreement between the city and Newland, Australia Mountain Ranch. The initial agreement was approved in 2012, and then subsequent to that, we had three amendment extensions, one in 2013 and two in 2014. There were various reasons for those extensions. They had to do with milestones associated with either design or the construction of the facilities that were part of the agreement. I am happy to say that we are very close to the completion of the Northern Water Solutions. I would say we are at approximately, I'd love to say 99%. Tomorrow, we have one final item that we are going to be working on, and we believe we have a solution already identified. And if that is truly the case, that on Wednesday at 8:00 AM, we would actually be starting the 30-day substantial completion timeline. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions. And then also, we have Pete Tyke with Newland, as well as Stuart Barney with Newland, and I believe Stuart was interested in coming up and maybe sharing some information with you as well.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then, will the city clerk please read Resolution 15-1723 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 15-1723, approving and authorizing city manager to execute the Fourth Amendment to Northern Solutions Water Facilities Agreement relating to the development of water resources and infrastructure to provide water service to Australia, authorizing city manager to take all actions and execute all documents necessary to carry out intent of resolution and terms of the amendment and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Loretano and Councilman Pizzillo, open for council discussion. Would you like to bring somebody up? I know you said somebody wanted to come up from the...
Yes, Stuart Barney with Newland, who is their engineer that's been working with our project partners.
If they come up now to speak, why don't you invite him up?
All right, great, thank you.
Mayor, council, I just want to spend a moment thanking you for your time. This is not what we wanted to do. We didn't want to have to extend it again, but we did run into a bug. And for quite some time, we thought it was associated with a system programming or electrical. But we did identify it, and it's actually, as Rebecca mentioned, we have implemented that solution, and the system has been operating, part of the, part of the system has been operating. So we'll have it finalized tomorrow, and we'll be working with staff to finalize paperwork, and so they'll be behind us, so if you have any questions, we'd be happy to.
I appreciate that, thank you. Council? Yes, Councilman Campbell.
How long are we extending it for? I mean...
Well, we extended to June 30 of 2016, but when we sat down with legal counsel and Rebecca Zook and staff, we weren't sure what was happening. And we were, I personally, I was concerned that we had to replace a component that had a 16-week lead time. So unfortunately, these aren't things that we can go buy at Home Depot and fix it, it takes a bit of time. So that's what happened, but after that meeting, we did some testing, and we were able to identify what was going on and get it fixed. It's actually been repaired, or we've implemented the fix.
So you're just asking us to extend until June of 2016?
Yes, but we fully expect, now we fully expect it to be done like in the next month or so.
That's very reasonable. We don't want you to, we want it to work.
Yeah.
Regardless, so...
It's actually working right now, it's just we can't put it in auto mode, so we solved that problem, and now it's...
Is June long enough?
Oh, God, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay.
Plenty of time.
Okay, good.
Any other comments for council? All right, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you, all right, thank you very much. All right, council, any comments or reports on current events? Yes, Councilman Vice Mayor Loretano, why do I want to call you councilperson?
Just chick to the right, that's okay.
You moved up, and I keep doing that, go ahead.
I just want to, Gailene's not here, but I attended the ballet with the mayor, and I just want, it was wonderful, it was a great event up there, and I, I just want to pass that along, she did an awesome job, everybody from the city did a wonderful job. I had so many people on Facebook, you know, posting that they were there and having a great time, and they had a huge crowd, even with the homecoming going on down the street.
Two of them?
Yeah, I guess there were two homecomings, right? You know, so I just want to pass that along, that is like such a signature event, and I told the mayor, I said, it kind of reminds you of like, and I don't want to compare, but it's like a Scottsdale-type event, it was very classy, very well-done, and I was so proud of our city and everybody worked for it, so thank you.
And it was packed.
Yeah.
They were so afraid with the events in the community that it wasn't going to, it wasn't going to be anybody there, but I thought there were more people, I don't know this number, were there more people than last year? Do you have a number on that? Were you going to give that? Oh, I'm sorry, I took away from the city manager. You'll give it to us later, okay. Any other comments on, yes, Councilman Campbell?
I just want to share with my fellow councilmembers, Councilmember Larento, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Larento and Councilmember Holman, and I went to the council mixer Thursday night, and it was absolutely a fabulous event. It was so enthusiastic received. We have four cities that have already spoken to be the next hosts, so the next event will be in January, hosted by the city of Peoria, then in April, the city of Avondale, and then in September will be the city of Tolleson. And it was just a wonderful opportunity where we didn't discuss any city business, and we were able to talk to one another and establish a relationship so that when we start working on projects and on programs that benefit all of us, we will have already started a dialogue where we know one another and have this regional cooperation, and it was just, it was a really fun thing. And we had two mayors there, Mayor Wilcock and Mayor Weiss from Avondale, and we had three councilmembers from every city except for Wickenburg there, so it was very, very nice.
I'm sorry I had to miss that, but...
It's okay, you can come, you can come again.
Yes, any other comments of activities? All right, I just want to comment to our police and fire. It's just amazing, you're doing outstanding job. police and fire. It's just amazing. You, you do an outstanding job, and you see those emails coming in, what's happening in the community and on the edges of the community, and I hope firefighters and our policemen were safe. I know a couple were injured, and so I haven't heard the reports, so I'm assuming that they're fine. Okay, you're nodding your head, good. So, it, you know, we're having a great time on the weekend, we're doing our thing, and, and, you know, you read what they're doing, and I know it's their job, but a lot of it's, I, I have a great fear for our public service, you know, with the attitude of the public anymore, so we really appreciate it, and thank you so much for your professionalism, both teams, so. Okay, if nothing else, Bob, this is your time to tell us about it now, and the numbers.
I'd love to, thank you, Mayor and Council. As, as you mentioned, the ballet under the stars was a tremendous success. It was held lakeside at Australia, and Mayor Lord and Vice Mayor Laura Tonno was, were there, and addressed a crowd of nearly four thousand.
Wow.
Last year's crowd was three thousand, so it was definitely an increase of, from last year. It was more than a ballet, it was free activities, booths, they had giveaways, over a hundred children had their faces painted, and walkways were turned into a canvas for chalk, chalk art. Zizi also made a special appearance, and they were able to also visit the Goodyear Mobile Museum. And as we, as you, you've expressed your thanks, we'd also like to express our thanks to the Arts Commission and also the library for their participation in the event. Our staff was there en masse and did a tremendous job also coordinating the fun-filled and action-packed event that was, was held. It was a great success, and the ballet plans to return in 2016. The next item, I just have two additional items. The next is a census count. On Thursday, October first, the Census Bureau enumerers will start going door-to-door, working daytime, evenings, and weekdays and weekend hours. Our residents are urged to answer the doors and be counted. The special census will obtain a population count for Goodyear, is, which is essential in determining the actual count that we have, which we, we think we are undercounted. So, that results in a proportion of revenue that will, will be more appropriate to our actual number and increase the revenue to the city. All census employees for residents will have census badges and with their picture ID on them, and if they have any questions about them, they can contact the city or contact our website. The final point that I'd like to mention is another public meeting that's coming up on this Thursday at Pebble Creek and the Eagles Nest. As council is aware, and I think many of our residents in Pebble Creek and Palm Valley are aware, they expressed to the city their concerns over the noise from the I-10 freeway. The section that we're looking at the sound, or taking sound level surveys, is from the 303 to Bullard Ave on the south side of, on the north side of the I-10. So, what we're going to be doing is on Thursday night, beginning at 6:00 PM at the clubhouse, we're going to be presenting an update for the residents that have, that are interested in the sound levels there, as far as what the readings were, and also answer any questions that they have. This is the first of probably two meetings that we'll have with the community at the, at Pebble Creek, so that we are urging Palm Valley residents, as well as Pebble Creek residents that are interested in this, to attend and to hear the presentation, ask any questions. Next council meeting on Monday night, we'll also give the council a briefing on this and share with you the comments that we hear from the public meeting. That's all the comments I have.
Yeah, I don't think there was any staff, what?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, no, no inquiries of staff from council. I, I want to mention something before, and you know, I, the noise was too loud, my hearing aids, I want to recognize, see all those young students back there? Can one of you come up, as he speaks us, and to the microphone and tell us the school? Come on, come on, come on. This is a school project, and, and I just happened to wander in the audience tonight because I saw all these good-looking young people, and I wonder, well, what are they doing here? And so, they're here on a school project. So, announce your name, and then tell me the school and what your project is.
Hi, my name's Ethan Aluz, and I go to Raymond's Kellis High School in Glendale, Arizona, and this assignment is for our government honors class, and we basically have to speak about what the whole entire meeting is about, some of the topics, and the behavior of different people here, and just talk about our opinions on the, on the whole, all the topics and everything, our reaction, and if we enjoyed it or not.
Well, I want to give you a round of applause because that is really a great project, and we want more young people interested in government and learning how it's run. So, we really thank you, and we're pleased that Glendale came to Goodyear to observe one of our council meetings, so let's give them a round of applause. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
All right, the next work session will be on the fifth at five o'clock, and we'll have also a regular meeting at six, and then the next one will be on the nineteenth and the twenty-sixth. And so, with that, meeting's adjourned.